I know somebody here in town that's got it and I'm gonna, I put a call in to them tonight but they didn't answer.
Is it fiction? Or no?
I assume it's on a compituation of all the things that he reported on over the years when he was here.
All right.
That's what I'm guessing. I got a really interesting book about June last year in regards to the court system here in San Antonio. It started in the nineteen hundreds right up through Droback and Kelsey and everybody's present. So it was kinda fun to read.
How are you?
And now it's been a while.
How are you?
Quiet.
Does that get new or does it not?
He had it out about six months.
Firmid activity has, but we have lots going on.
When he's a cheerleader, zoning is so not him when he's a little bird.
Yeah, that's freedom of radio.
There it is, right? Okay, perfect.
He said the hardest part was time.
Wait, is that Sue's schedule?
We're gonna get on our schedule.
Hold on, I was doing during, um, uh, sleep here. I think that was very funny, right? Of course she was joking.
Twice. You had a bad name?
It, how, I guess bad name is not correct. Because there were such a, I guess, on councils and boards and stuff like that, it became, doesn't anybody else want it?
Oh, yeah.
Things change with what happened to the policeman between after, you know, ten years ago and then after Ferguson and all that, you know, different attitudes.
Times are changing.
Yeah, you gotta watch your Ps and Qs, you know? It might be bakers next.
Yes, that's right.
The race I, the race I watched this time with most interest was Medina and Kaput.
Yeah. I was surprised about that outfit.
I wasn't at all.
Really?
Yeah. Absolutely thought that friend and-
They're on TV.
Oh, really? Say wives.
Off the deep end.
Gonna be like, yes, I am.
Did you sign an autograph?
Yeah.
That's so great.
We just have, we just use the antenna, you know, who gets the ABC and ABC stuff. I don't understand why Terry Medina didn't do it.
I think, uh-
So you still get a couple of channels with the antenna?
We get, we get ABC and ABC, that's really-
The big ones.
I think that's supposed to go away, right?
Oh, really?
They're all supposed to stop broadcasting over the airwaves or something in favor of, so, yeah.
Give 'em all.
Yeah, that's what I've heard. And I've heard that's been going on for a while.
Oh, really?
Yes.
That's interesting.
Well, that's a perspective I'll have to ponder. We're close, kids. Showtime. Well, I'm gonna wait, the door opened over there, so I'm gonna-
Oh, yeah.
Although I do watch South Park.
She hasn't been at it at this point.
Yeah, about another year I will be able to see it.
See if I can not flow.
Is this cartoons?
Sequins.
I enjoy it.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. This meeting tonight is Cablecast Live on Charter Communication Cable TV Channel Eight and is being recorded and replayed on the following Monday and Friday at 1:00 PM on Charter Channel Seventy-One and Comcast Channel Twenty-Five. Meetings can also be viewed from the city's website, www.cityofcapitola.org. Our technician tonight is Maran Cooley. As a reminder, please turn off your cellphones here in the meeting room and please sign your name at the podium, podium when you come up and speak. Welcome to my last meeting, Thursday, January fifteenth of the Capital Planning Commission. Roll call, please. Commissioner Welch?
Here.
Commissioner Graves?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Newman?
Here.
And Chairperson Ortiz?
Here.
Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, under new business, we have the oath of office for the newly appointed Commissioner Ed Newman, who is seated here to my left, returning, a returning, he didn't get enough last time and he's coming back, which is great for the City of Capitola. And as I understand it, we will all be taking the oath of office as we're returning as well. Okay.
Who's gonna, who wants to stand in the middle with the microphone? Our new- You're still it? I'm following Sue's direction. Luster them in the middle with the microphone.
Stand, I won't see you here. You can definitely-
I state your name.
I, Ron.
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
Sowland.
That I will support and defend-
Support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance-
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States-
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely-
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion-
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge-
And I will well and faithfully discharge-
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you for two more units.
And now, I will entertain a motion for the, um, the passing of the baton for a new, I'm gonna take it in one motion, a new chairperson and a vice chair.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Linda Smith as chair and TJ Welch as vice chair.
Great. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Changing of the chair.
Yep.
Well, I have big shoes to fill and this is the first time I've done this, so you guys will just have to bear with me. I do have a couple of things that I want to say, just because I think it's, it's good to say for the public and a reminder to all of us every once in a while. First of all, full details of all items that are reviewed at the Planning Commission meetings are available to the public through the website or through contacting the City Planning Department. Copies of the agenda are provided in the back and that includes a short description of all the items that are gonna be heard tonight. The consent calendar is a calendar of those items which have been found to meet code requirements and are considered routine, so rather than hearing each of them individually, we hear them as a lump. And at the beginning of that, I'll describe, I'll read a short description of what each item is. And because they don't get a staff presentation and you don't get a lot of detail if you didn't pull the packet, I may paraphrase somewhat and add some of the information that is included in the staff report that I think the public would find informative. And tonight you'll see a little bit of that. If there's any reason to pull one of those items, and this can be done by a member of the, of the public or by a commissioner, then the item will get full review and an opportunity for a presentation and full discussion. Public hearings are intended to provide an opportunity for public discussion and input to the commissioners prior to a decision. Members of the public are allowed three minutes to deliver their comments to the commission, but I do not intend to use the timer unless we have a large number of people along agenda or there's some extenuating circumstances. People are watching from home on their televisions or streaming from digital devices, and so it's really important that members of the public that come and speak do approach the podium and use the microphone so that those people who are beaming in remotely can hear them. It's also important for us to make sure that we continue to use our mics, so I may remind the public and commissioners when the guy that's running the TV thing back there comes and tells me that he can't hear. I'm hoping and expect that members of the public will always show respect to the speaker, and that includes keeping conversations to a minimum out in the audience when someone is speaking, direct their comments to the commissioners and not to other members of the audience, and to, in the interest of time, minimize duplication of the same message. In addition, I expect my fellow commissioners to be respectful and positive in delivering their opinions, to minimize duplication of the message and be concise in their delivery, again, in the interest of time. If those expectations are met, I believe we'll have time-effective and productive meetings, and sometimes they'll even be fun, and I promise to do my best to lead them in that direction. So with that, we will move to the next item on the agenda, which are commission appointments. We need appointments for the Art and Cultural Commission and the Traffic and Parking Commission. Does anybody wanna volunteer for either one of those, right away?
I have been serving as your representative to the Traffic and Parking. I'd like to continue if nobody else wants it.
Okay.
All yours.
I've been serving on the Art and Cultural Commission and feel the same way. I'm more than happy to continue, it's a fun group, but I'd be willing to give it up if somebody wants it.
Then I would, uh, put a motion forward that Ron, uh, continue with the Traffic and Parking and Linda continue with the Art and Cultural Commission appointments.
I will second that.
Okay, it's a motion made by Commissioner Welch and seconded by, yes, Commissioner Newman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Oral communications, first from staff, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, Madam Chair.
Public comments. This is the opportunity for members of the public who are here to speak about an item that is not on our agenda this evening. Is there anyone here to speak about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, are there any commission comments tonight?
Madam Chairperson, first of all, I believe we do have an addition, which is the coastal findings for one of the projects that got to us just tonight, and I think the public needs to know when that happens. And if I may carry, continue on.
Please do.
At the last meeting, I asked the staff, and I'm very happy to report the staff carried the ball very well, in fact, I think you scored a touchdown with regards to cinema and the numerous signs in the window in their expansion area. I wanna compliment the staff, I wanna compliment the people at the cinema for cooperating with you, and it is much cleaner and better up there. And while I'm on the subject of signs, I believe that when we recognize that somebody in the community is doing something really right, I'm not above mentioning it here. So I'd like to mention tonight that I am totally pleased with the new management and control at CVS Pharmacy with regards to all the signs that they had in the windows during Christmas and Thanksgiving and the rest of it. If you go out there today, it is clean, it is presentable, and I think they should receive a letter from us saying thank you for that. Now, the one bad one, because you did such a great job. I counted today at the corner of Capitola Road and Forty-Sixth, Forty-Second Avenue, excuse me, seven signs, all saying the same thing, that we now have Liberty Tax Consultants at that corner. All the signs are illegal because they're not the type of signs, they're monument signs the way they are, and I hope you guys can carry through and get a message to them, because liberty kinda goes away after about three months. April fifteenth comes and then you can't find liberty or the rest of them, so I think this is abominable, the way the sign pollution is at that intersection.
I actually, uh, sent them a code complaint letter today.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We'll see how good it worked.
It sounded like it came from up high.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments?
I just wanna say that I'm very pleased to be back on the commission and to be able to work with the other commissioners here and the staff for another period. What I learned when I was working for three years on the General Plan Advisory Committee was how high the approval rating is for the City of Capitola among the presidents and visitors, and so, one of my guiding principles as a commissioner, I expect to be over the next period of time, is that any major changes to Capitola, the burden is on someone that wants to, to really change a winning game.
Well, welcome back, Ed. We're glad to have you. I also have one communication. I attended a December eighteenth Mid-County Groundwater Stakeholder Group meeting that was held here in council chambers. I found it extremely informative. It was focused on community engagement and getting to the right questions and getting people involved. It was almost a full house. It was really amazing. Their next meeting is January twenty-seventh from seven to nine PM at the SoCal Congressional Church. They'll focus in that meeting on developing a set of recommendations and strategies for the local water agencies to consider in implementing the new laws that have come to pass. So anybody who's interested, it's a very well-run meeting, it's a good group of people. If you're interested in attending, it's January twenty-seventh from seven to nine at the SoCal Congressional Church. And with that, staff comments.
On behalf of staff, I just wanted to recognize and congratulate the four returning planning commissioners we have on your reappointment, and of course, welcome Commissioner Newman back to the Planning Commission. We're all looking forward to working with him. He did a great job on the General Plan Advisory Committee and we expect to have another great year working with you guys, so thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion, or any changes or corrections to the minutes from the December fourth Planning Commission meeting?
I'll move the minutes if there's no corrections.
Second.
Motion is made by Commissioner Graves, seconded by Commissioner Ortiz. All in favor?
Aye.
I will abstain.
Okay, so it's, um, we don't have to do a roll call, it's just one, okay. So now we move to the consent calendar, and again, there are three items on tonight's consent calendar. Unless someone would like to pull and discuss one of these items independently, they will be heard and, and motioned all at one time. I'm going to read a short description of all three of the items and then I'll offer an opportunity to any member of the public or any commissioners to pull one or more of those items. The first item is at nine oh four Sir Francis Avenue, a request for a one-year time extension to a previously approved design permit and coastal development permit for a second-story residential addition. No changes in the physical characteristics of the lot or the municipal code have happened since we approved this extension a couple of years ago, or last year, I guess. It has been extended several times, and so it should be noted that with the zoning changes or the ordinance changes that are going on this year, next year, an additional extension may not be appropriate, but this year, it, nothing changes. The second item is two hundred Monterey Avenue, number two. It is a conditional use permit for the sale of beer and wine at the Taqueria Baja Restaurant, which is an existing restaurant located in the Central Village zoning district. The last item is twelve hundred Forty-first Avenue, Suite C, a conditional use permit for a restaurant, an Asian bakery, with onsite consumption of food located where there is currently an Asian market. And again, all of these items have been found by staff to meet our code. Does any member of the public wish to pull one of those items for further discussion? Does any member of the commission, would you like to pull one of those items?
I'd like to pull A, which is nine oh four Sir Francis Avenue, and I have a comment with regards to B, but the comment is very short.
Okay. I believe it's appropriate to hear the comment before I ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar?
My concern with item number B, two hundred Monterey Avenue, is, has nothing to do with the request for the sale of alcohol and on-premises. It has to do with the staff report. It, the staff report seems to indicate that the only neighbors to this location are businesses, where in fact, Emile lives next door in a residence, there's a residence immediately adjacent to him that's for rent, there's a sign in the window today, so I know that, and all the residents on El Camino Medio, which backs up to this particular, are residential units. So I think the staff needs to be more descriptive in what surrounds a particular application. I'm not criticizing staff, but I just let you know that I do look at every application and go out in the field, and while I knew what was there, I found the staff report lacking. Thank you.
I'd like, I'd like to say something about that. Under discussion, the second sentence says, "The property neighbors' commercial uses along Monterey Avenue and backs up to residences along El Camino Medio."
Yeah.
So, they did, I feel they did a good job of saying that there were residences there.
Yes. My concern was that they considered everything between El Camino Media and Taqueria Baja to be commercial residents. They aren't. There are two residents, one of them was my neighbor, in fact, he still is my neighbor, that owns the old plum tree across the street, Emile, and then the one that's for rent immediately adjacent to that. Also, the four units, while you may call, consider them commercial, at the corner of Monterey and El Camino Medio are really apartments for rent, and so they are residential units. That's, I'm just trying to make sure we, we're completely clear. Not being overly critical.
Okay. With, with that then said, I will move the remainder of the consent calendar with the exclusion of item A.
I'll second. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Ortiz, seconded by Commissioner Welch. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous?
I have a couple of comments about the consent calendar. One, I mentioned to staff today that when we have a beer and wine license, I think it's better to say the words beer and, and wine in the description instead of alcohol, because alcohol indicates that it's, it's all alcohol. So I think, luckily, we didn't have any neighbors come by, but, and then the other thing I wanted to-
I believe I put that on the postcard that went out, actually.
Okay, great, thank you. And the other thing I wanted to mention was, welcome to the new business in town. It'll be nice to have another bakery. I'm really looking forward to doing some. Good luck.
So if you are here tonight on item B, two hundred Monterey, or item C, twelve hundred Forty-first Avenue, you just got approved and, and so you're welcome to skate out the back if you would like.
Thank you very much.
And congratulations and, and good luck.
Thank you.
With that, I would like to move to nine oh four Sir Francis Avenue, and staff report, please.
Good evening, commissioners. Before you, is a request for a one-year time extension for a previously approved design permit and coastal development permit for the remodel of an existing single-family residence and for the construction of a new second story. This property is located in the R-one Single Family Residential Zoning District. As you stated previously, this is the seventh time extension applied for. The first was granted in two thousand eight and then all the way through two thousand And here you can see the original proposal, and no square footage has been added or subtracted. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve application fourteen one seventy-three by allowing this one-year time extension.
Any questions for staff? Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak on this item?
I'd like to tell you the reason I pulled it first, maybe then we can discuss it, if you don't mind.
No, go ahead.
Um, I'm happy with the staff report and everything, but in the letter to us by the party named Mafia, it indicates, and I'll read exactly what it says, "Have recently met with our drafter Chuck Bucket, Burkett, I'm sorry, from Final Draft, to make minor revisions that will better suit our family needs." And yet, when this was approved some seven years ago, it, there was a condition that said that if there were changes, it had to come back to us or you had to approve it. So all I'm asking tonight is, what are these minor revisions so that I can judge whether the condition is still being carried out?
The minor revisions can be seen, so here, basically, they added square footage to the left side of the home and took away from the front. There's no addition of square footage for the approved project. We approved it administratively, thought it was minor enough, so that's where those changes came from.
Good, I know you don't have a pointer, but you said there is additional square footage, and that isn't what the staff report says. So now, tell me where it is on, on this. Sorry to-
It's on this backside of the house. I also know that Chuck, the designer's here to answer any additional questions.
Do we have any shots of what was appro, because we didn't get plans, any shots of what was approved seven years ago with regards to the side elevation where the, side rear elevation where the square footage is added and whether or not it makes that a shed roof on that left, or shed wall on that left side as we're, as I'm facing the picture here? Was there any drawback on the second unit, second floor addition?
Um, I don't-
In other words, was the second floor addition articulated back, like our, our ordinance required in those days?
I don't believe that portion of it changed. I don't have the plans scanned into the PowerPoint, but I do have them upstairs.
So this is, is gonna bring a concern from me, because when I read the staff report, I didn't see that there were, I mean, minor changes and moving square footage around could be considered, you know, an element that should come back to us. So when I read the report, I didn't see anything that should've come back to us, but now what I'm hearing makes me question that. Under what circumstances can they actually change the floor plan of a house and it not be considered significant enough to come back to planning?
Madam Chair, typically, if they make interior changes to floor plans, we would approve that administratively, we wouldn't send it back through a design permit process, because that really involves the exterior features. I do recall when this was initially discussed with the changes, they were pretty minor. I-
I'm happy with the staff report and everything, but in the letter to us by the party named Mafia, it indicates, and I'll read exactly what it says, "Have recently met with our drafter Chuck Bucket, Burkett, I'm sorry, from Final Draft, to make minor revisions that will better suit our family needs." And yet, when this was approved some seven years ago, it, there was a condition that said that if there were changes, it had to come back to us, or you had to approve it. So, all I'm asking tonight is, what are these minor revisions, so that I can judge whether the condition is still being carried out?
The minor revisions can be seen, so here, basically, they added square footage to the left side of the home, and took away from the front. There's no addition of square footage for the approved project. We approved it administratively, thought it was minor enough, so that's where those changes came from.
I know you don't have a pointer, but you said there is additional square footage, and that isn't what the staff report says. So, now tell me where it is on, on this. Sorry to-
That's fine. It's on this backside of the house. I also know that Chuck, the designer's here to answer any additional questions.
Do we have any shots of what was appro, because we didn't get plans, any shots of what was approved seven years ago with regards to the side elevation where the, side rear elevation where the square footage is added, and whether or not it makes that a shed roof on that left, or shed wall on that left side, as we're, as I'm facing the picture here? Was there any drawback on the second unit, second floor addition?
Uh, my-
In other words, was the second floor addition articulated back, like are ordinance required in those days?
I don't believe that portion of it changed. I don't have the plans scanned into the PowerPoint, but I do have them upstairs.
So, this is, is going to bring a concern from me, because when I read the staff report, I didn't see that there were, I mean, minor changes and moving square footage around could be considered, you know, an element that should come back to us. So, when I read the report, I didn't see anything that should have come back to us, but now what I'm hearing makes me question that. Under what circumstances can they actually change the floor plan of a house, and it not be considered significant enough to come back to planning?
Madam Chair, typically, if they make interior changes to floor plans, we would approve that administratively, and we wouldn't send it back through a design permit process, because that really involves the exterior features. I do recall when this was initially discussed with the changes, they were pretty minor. I must confess, I don't recall exactly what they were. I want to say they might have changed some of the exterior finishes around the door, and then shifted some square footage from one part of the house to the other, but it was something that was really minor. I apologize that the plans aren't here, obviously, that would help illustrate it much better.
I think you said that the applicant is actually here to address.
Please do.
Yeah, right up to the mics.
And we actually have a movable mic if you need to point at the screen closer.
I'm the building designer. Do you notice the three windows at the center of the house?
You might have to get a little bit closer to the mic, sorry.
The three windows, excuse me, at the center of the house?
Yes.
The roof directly above that, as the, the floor area ratio is calculated, any area that's taller than 16 feet is counted twice. So, what we did was we lowered the area at the three windows down, so that two-story area above the entryway was only counted once, and that square footage was then transferred to the left rear side to make, to allow for a larger laundry room, a larger master bath. So, we just transferred square footage from one area to the other on the upper floor.
Okay.
You can see, there's the two elevations that you have, show the difference. Do you have the other elevation?
So, did that change any windows on that left, upper floor?
It took the three windows in the front and reduced it to two. That's the only front change.
I mostly, let me tell you where I'm coming from, and that is, sometimes neighbors, you know, might not have had a chance to come up and speak about this change, and the neighbors that would be, you know, that, where it would affect the neighbors would be where you added square footage on that side, and so, does that side have any more windows, or are there any more windows up on the second story, or anything that might, you know, impact?
I really want to keep one conversation going at a time, please. That way, we can all hear what is being said.
On the, the left side of the elevation, as you travel back on the upper floor, those windows are bathroom windows, they're very small, there's no bedrooms, for example, looking out, large windows looking out over a side yard. And the front elevation, we just removed the center window and dropped them a little bit.
Can you tell us how many feet the side came out?
I don't have an exact square footage in my head, but it would, it would be no more than 10 or 12 square feet of glass. It's not much.
Right. But how many square feet of, of actual building did it come out?
I, I don't have an exact number, but it was probably shifting around 50, 40 square feet, maybe?
Commissioner Welch, could you share with the rest of us, though?
On the, we can admit our electronic, so there is a picture that shows the extension that was-
Yeah, pull that up. I forgot.
It was just the, so it's the upper left-hand side, the, the second-story floor that was extended back?
Yes, the, the, if you notice the, the left side of the elevation, the exterior wall stacks straight up. That upper wall extends back another seven or eight feet back before it turns in.
Got it. So, at that, you extended that, how much further back than it was?
Seven or eight feet.
Okay.
I could support this if, indeed, it was an addition of, you know, 40 to 50 square feet difference. I mean, it's not, it's not an addition. They took away from one thing and added to the other, and I can't imagine, as long as they're still within their setbacks, that we wouldn't have approved this, but if that's not the case-
What it did was it transferred the floor area ratio. We had double-counted square footage toward the front, we were lowering the roof enough to have it counted once, and we reused that space to the left rear. So, that building didn't get any bigger, it just was shifted a little bit.
And I guess I'm not following that. With the three windows that you mentioned over the front door on the second-floor elevation, how does lowering those windows lower the floor area ratio?
When, when you step into the front door of this house, as you step in and look up, the, the volume is two stories tall.
There is no room there, a balcony, or, or veranda, or anything?
Well, the veranda is, is about 12 feet beyond, as you step through the door, you look about 12 feet, and then you have a veranda above. That vertical space is only counted once if you lower the roof below 16 feet. Once it becomes two stories or higher, it's counted twice for the mass of the building.
This, this house also, where you added the addition of some laundry space, you said, "This looks out onto the other street." I'm trying to think of the name of the one that goes, it, it looks into backyards, am I correct?
Yeah, it's, it's an interior lot, so it looks to the neighbor.
Yeah. I, I want to tell my fellow council commissioners here, I, I do not have a problem with this. I have a problem, though, and the reason I brought this up for your, your discussion, is so many times, we accept and approve plans, and then what gets built is not the plans we approve. We have some god-awful examples of it. Thank God they're out in the 41st Avenue area, most of them, but just when I was alerted to the idea of, "What is minor in your mind, and what's minor in my mind, or to your neighbor immediately adjacent to it," all comes into bearing. I would like to think that we're building to the plans that were approved, and if we're not building to the plans that were approved, then the plans should come back for an, for an update and a, and a reapproval. That's the only place I was coming from. I don't disagree with-
I, I understand what you're, what you're saying. The rooms that were previously approved was a bathroom, and the, the window that looks out on that same yard is still a bathroom window.
Is it opaque?
Uh, it, it could be. Doesn't have to be.
Yeah. See, uh, my recollection of seven years ago, and I probably wasn't here seven years ago, but my, my thought about it is that, you know, at that time, neighbors had the chance to come and speak and look down into their backyard, and now we're changing that without any notification to them and putting it on a consent agenda. That's the only place I was coming from.
I don't believe it was originally approved as an opaque window, but if, if that's a condition of approval, we, we could live with that.
Okay, do we have any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public portion of the, the meeting and bring it back to the commissioners for additional comments.
Just a question for staff. Is the construction hours condition consistent with our current policy? I think the way it reads back then, the way it read, or it was changed, it looks like, was six days a week, eight to six.
It's changed now. It's different.
Is that what we're doing now?
No, I don't think so.
Apparently, it's nine to four on Saturday.
So, we don't want, have a condition that's inconsistent with what our current-
Commissioner Newman, we can reaffirm that the, that the noise limitations and the conditions are consistent with municipal code. If they're not, we will notify the applicant. Municipal code would still prevail over any written conditions, so we will double-check that.
I agree with you, and condition eight needs to be changed to allow for that. I'll move approval of this project. I'm, I'm going to probably do something in this motion that's rather unusual, but I believe with us working very diligently on the general plan, and now on the zoning ordinance, that I would really encourage the applicant to start and get construction going in this year, because I think it might be looked at as differently under new rules and regulations. And I think you said that, Madam Chairperson. So, I'll move the application with the minor changes, and also the change that Ed mentioned with regards to condition eight, times, time of construction.
One second.
Okay, motion's been made by Commissioner Graves and seconded by Commissioner Newman. Are there any other comments or discussion? I only have one, and that is, just to staff, and I wasn't here seven years ago, and I've looked at these plans, I think, three or four times now, and I did not catch that there was a change. So, changes like that, because of what we have experienced with what Commissioner Graves said about things getting built that weren't approved, I would really like to have it more evident in the staff report that there were changes and why they're minor, and that, I think, will help us all to understand. So, having said that, if there are no other comments, do we, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. So, congratulations and good luck. Those are all the items on the consent calendar, and there are no additional public hearings this evening, correct? So, we move to the director's report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a few items for you tonight. First, I did want to announce that we have a new building official in town, Brian Van San, who many of you know, has been our building inspector for over the past four years, does a great job, good technical skills, really customer service-oriented, so we're excited to have him move into that position, and if you have a chance to see him, please offer your congratulations and welcoming him into his new role. There's also a few trainings that I wanted to make you alert of, in case you're, any of you are interested in attending. The first one that's coming up is there's going to be a wireless workshop held in Watsonville on January the 28th. The time has not been set yet, but it will be an evening meeting, it's free. The intent of the workshop will be to go over the various federal regulations that are in place that limit the discretion of local agencies to approve or deny wireless facilities. There's been some recent legislation that kind of muddied the waters over the last couple of years. So, that could be a useful workshop, if any of you are interested. Let me know, and then, once we get the time nailed down, I'll, I'll let you know that. The next one, the California League of Cities is having a Planning Commissioner Academy that's going to be two, three days, from March 4th to March 6th. It is being held in Newport Beach. Yeah, I would note that it's also held during a planning commission evening, so if more than three of you, or more than two of you are interested, we might have a problem, but if any one of you are, again, let me know, and I'll try to provide some information to you. That one is not free. It's, it does have a registration cost. The third one is, I think we reported at the last meeting that Katie had been working with the State Historic Preservation Office to coordinate a historic preservation training here in Capitola. They've confirmed with us that they will hold that training here in town. It is going to be held August 21st. It's an all-day hearing. I believe this one's free. So, we would cordially invite you all to that workshop. We also will plan on attending as well. Should be some good information on historic preservation.
Who will be putting that on?
That's going to be from the State Historic Preservation Office.
And we'll be inviting neighboring communities to attend as well.
Great, great, that's excellent to hear.
And then a couple of other orders of business, just coming up on your calendars in the next few months. By March, we'll bring the zoning ordinance issues and options paper to you. We're working on it, making good progress. We're trying to get that in good shape to bring to you probably in March. Initial plan is February, I think it's probably going to happen a month later, though. And then, following that, of course, we'll be trying to schedule regular meetings each month. To the extent that calendars are not real busy, I think we'll just keep them on regular evenings, so we don't burden everybody's schedule. If they are busy, I'll work with the chair to see if we might want to schedule some special meetings, a second meeting on a month to get through some of those issues. And then finally, our housing element update is underway. We have hired a consultant, Kim Lee Horn, who's now got an office based here in Capitola on Bay Avenue, was awarded the contract. Bill Wiseman is heading that up. Many of you may know Bill. He's done a lot of work in Capitola in the past. We are going to be holding a public workshop to go over the housing element update in March. Date has not yet been set. We're looking at probably the first week, though. It'll be in the evening, a public meeting to get input on various housing issues in the city. Following that, we'll start drafting the housing element before it gets released for public review. We intend to hold a second workshop with the planning commission, so you'll get to see it before anything gets drafted or sent out, and we'll get your feedback. And that wraps up my report for this evening. Thank you.
Are there any joint sessions planned with the planning commissioners and the, and the city council members?
None are currently planned. It's certainly a possibility, as, you know, my, my vision is that, you know, we'll go through a lot of the issues, and I think some we'll be able to work out, and there'll be others that just, you know, we need to talk about more, and once we get through a number of them, we might want to look at something like a joint workshop to go over those issues that we're really having a difficult time reaching resolution on.
Okay. Great, thank you.
My pleasure.
Commission Communications, any additional-
I have a question. A comment that you made brought up something that I have wondered about. I heard something in the wind about Councilmember Termini trying to get Capitola as a Wi-Fi, a free Wi-Fi zone throughout all of town, and have you heard, is, is that gone anywhere?
That's the first I've heard of it.
Well, that's probably about how far it's gone then.
Yeah.
Okay. I was hoping, but I guess not. Okay.
Yeah, I have heard some discussions about expanding the Wi-Fi capacity in town in the past, but nothing recently.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make one comment, and it's because we're going into the zoning ordinance and the position papers and the rest of it, and I'm hearing quite a bit of feedback with regards to approvals that this body is giving, and then they become speculative on the real estate market. I'm thinking of the salvage yard on 38th Avenue, one only has to go out there, see the large sign. I don't think it's the job of the planning commission or the city council of City Capitola to inflate real estate prices, and I would hope that the new verbiage in the zoning ordinance and stuff would maybe cover the timeframe for construction and, and continuation, and allowing these to be transferred to new owners be considered, because I think we're on a very slippery path.
Yeah, I think that's a problem a lot of California communities have. Unfortunately, I think we're precluded from regulating the sale of entitlements, as well as the extensions of building permits. The way the building code is written now, as long as you're making any modicum of progress, laying a brick a month, you can keep a permit active indefinitely, and it's really frustrating. I know we've talked about the Warford House many times.
The lights are on tonight.
They are.
They get approval for the lights, you know, that's the thing.
Well, they're currently being cited, and they're going to start being assessed daily fines until they fix that house up.
I, I, you know, I understand the state law and what you just said.
Yeah.
But I think that we ought to look to our own ordinances to not make it, obviously, advantageous to speculators. And I think we can do that with timeframes that are much shorter than our, our two years that turned into seven years example tonight, and I'm not criticizing that, because that was a private individual trying to remodel his home for an expanded family, and I sympathize with him, but when we're really just trying to make these large commercial developments more attractive to buyers, because they've got permits that are vested, I think that's totally wrong. Sorry for the comments or the time.
Thank you for that input. Any other communications? With that, then, we will adjourn to the next planning commission meeting on Thursday, February the 5th, at 7:00 p.m. right here in these council chambers. Thank you and good night. Good job.
You guys need these back? Time or anything?
I don't know, so.